This program is being brought to you by Young's Welding. For your truck accessory, gateway, or all your other welding needs, be sure to call Young's Welding at 936-544-7432.
Out of section four, consider and approve to sell, lease, or convey the Crockett State School property to a third party in the terms of any sale, lease, or conveyance. Mr. Bruce Rockstrom likes to go first. We'd like to hear the first one.
Sure. Thank you. I am Bruce Rockstrom, the CEO of Bray Nation, our new name. We rebranded. We've been known as John Wood Charter School for years, and we rebranded this summer to Bray. I was here, I guess, a month ago or so, and enjoyed talking to you all. We've been the charter school at the Crockett State School facility since about April of last year, and started this year, and of course Serenity Place moved out. When we were here last time, we were talking to you about partnering with Hands of Healing, and Hands of Healing put an offer on the facility, very similar to what I think Serenity did with a purchase over a five-year period, with one year, not a payment. So, we're, I'm here representing ourselves now, and very briefly, Bray Nation is a twenty-year-old 501(c)(3) nonprofit. We're, we have an investment grade bond rating with standard insurers, very stable, very financially stable. We operate thirteen schools throughout Texas, and we're very interested in working with Hands of Healing and others, because there's interest in the property. I know the police department has been interested, I'm not sure they are anymore, but the police department has been interested in Angelina College, where there's been discussions about vocational appropriate. I know the school district is interested in maybe using it for some transportation purposes and maintenance and vocational program also. Hands of Healing is interested in reopening it as an RTC, maybe the original purpose of the building as residential school. We're interested in creating the school there. And we're, we're, I'm here to propose that we purchase the building for what I think the same amount the school district's funding in for, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I would probably like to spread that over a year, maybe two fifty down, and two fifty in six months, and two fifty a year from now. I don't have to do that, but I'd like to propose that. We have the money in the bank, it's just easier for our cash flow, as, if that would work with you all. The, why, why do that? And the, I think the big reason to do that is, we, we feel that by reopening it as a residential treatment center and charter school, we feel that we could generate a two million dollar payroll almost immediately in January, that we could have forty-eight kids there, and all the associated staff with a two million dollar annual payroll between the RTC and the school. As that grows over the next two to three years, that could go up to a ten million dollar payroll. So, and, and we're open to other uses for the facility. To be honest, it's a big place, you know that. It is forty acres fenced and forty acres un fenced. It has twenty-seven buildings. It has a ten thousand dollar a month electric bill. Just to mow the yard is thirteen hundred dollars. Just to mow the yard, that's the cheapest price you can find. It's a big facility. What, I, I think opening it up and building a partnership is the best thing we could do there. Hands of Healing is interested, they've got a team ready to go. We're interested, we have a team ready to go as a charter school. I've talked with Angelina College, and, and informal discussions, but there's been some more formal discussions prior. They're interested in a vocational program there. If, if anyone else in town, like the police department or someone else, was interested in building there, would love to partner with them for that. And Mr. Myers and I have had a number of conversations over that facility, not specifically about vocational, but I would be willing to do that too. I really feel that that facility needs to become a Crockett community outreach center for the entire city. Generate jobs, open up to different programs there, create income for the city, and we're willing to do that. So, we'd be glad to entertain any questions you might have. I, I'm fully committed to helping that big facility be a lot more than one little thing. Make sense?
How much staff would the school have in Starwood?
We would, what would we have there, maybe my principal was here?
If we were fully staffed, there would be twelve.
Yeah, twelve, twelve staff at the school, but the RTC would have, how many would you like? What would you like? Forty-eight kids there. By the way, this is Charles Hurst, who, Charles, Charles has a great background, many, many years working with different programs in residential treatment. Stand up, Charles. And Mickey Jost is our principal there. Mickey actually worked as a teacher at Crockett State School. And this would be your principal, this would be the managing director of the facility, and of course I would be involved also. How many, how many staff would you have for forty-eight kids? Thirty, twelve, forty-two staff. And that's January, February, forty-two staff. We're, we're committed to going up to one hundred and fifty, two hundred kids over the next several years, so just keep multiplying that, and all of a sudden you're up to one hundred and twenty staff very quickly. So, it's a good question.
Mr. Rockstrom, what would be the average annual income of an employee starting out working for the two companies?
Great question. Our teacher salaries there are starting at forty-eight. Our instructional aid salaries are starting at, you remember what they were at? I, I think they were, they were between twelve and fifteen dollars an hour. Your direct care staff are going to start at?
Thirty to thirty-four thousand.
Thirty to thirty-four thousand a year for direct care staff, and of course his clinical director, program director, stuff would be upwards. Good for him there, so.
Where the story for an employee would be about?
Well, at a minimum, it would be ten to twelve dollars, like a, like an entry level employee. However, the, you know, our, our payroll for forty-eight kids there between the facility and the school would be two million a year. So, and that would be for forty-two staff, so.
Would y'all live here, buy homes here? Most of the, the staff, would they buy homes here, work here?
Yeah, well, Mickey actually lives in Huntsville, she's dying to move to Crockett, so, you know, but that's indicative, I think, of what, what we're doing, we're talking about forty-two staff. Obviously, I think some staff would be here, but we would certainly hope to attract staff. I mean, we're talking within a couple of years, one hundred and twenty-plus staff there, and you know that's going to generate. And, and, and I, I think the beauty of this is that between the two of us, we're talking money that's not currently in Crockett, right? This is state money, so this would be Child Protective Service kids, Texas Education Agency. So, this is, this is additional money, salaries, jobs coming into, into Crockett. So, I, yeah, anyway, I, I think with a hundred-plus employees, we'll be a pretty good, pretty good employer here, pretty good, pretty good salaries.
Would the additional staff primarily broaden from other facilities in Starwood?
No, we're, I, I think the majority of the staff we would hire locally. We would want to hire locally. There, I can tell you that, I think Mr. Hurst, you want to address, you, you do have two staff. I think you've identified some locally you want to hire, and some that you would bring in, correct?
We're committed to hiring at least ninety-five percent of staff from the Crockett in this area. We don't wish to break them from Houston to work here unless they're going to move here. There are administrative staff that we have to bring in, because in order to run that facility, it has to be a certified licensed administrator, and so those two staff, we would have to bring those in, because they are already home staff. But other than that, everybody is probably coming from around here.
And Mickey, the staff that you had at the school?
The staff that I had at the school were, it was, the majority of them were from here in Crockett. I had my, the teacher was from Lufkin, my, my registrar was in Midway, and then I had a teacher from Palestine that drove, and I actually had a teacher from conversation that drove.
So, I'm kind of cloud forward on that, yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you.
All righty. Look forward to hearing y'all's decision and moving along. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Myers, Crockett ISD.
Well, thanks for hearing us tonight from the school district. That's all I'll do for entertaining the idea of the school district as a person. So, first of all, I want to tell you, I have three board members here tonight. This is not a call meeting for us, and so individuals cannot comment, can't even make any discussions. They're simply here to listen to what's going on in the board, so they do not have a forum here either. I'm really bored with this here, I might have to keep it that way, since this is not a call meeting for us. We're under the impression that you guys have a blank decision, and then maybe with the individual boards or whatever, in order to look out for details of this issue. So, I hope that I'm prepared, and I wish you, I'm, and I am prepared to make an offer, so, and here's the reasons for doing this. Number one is, you know, simply a district-based education facility, and we realize that it has career technology capability that we don't have in this school district. It has different rooms, different buildings, for us to actively attract some career and technology individuals in here, and for us to act back. Some of, I'm not sure we can cover the word close to what the other individuals are talking about in terms of staff and jobs. All we're going to be able to promise initially is that we're going to do some of our employees over there. You'll have to hire and be screened, and maybe we'll, we'll, to maintain it, so, so I'm not going to, I'm not going to promise that we're going to be able to produce anything we're not going to be able to produce, I'm not going to buy to check out in cash. Ultimately, what we're looking at with the facility is part of this, and moving our transportation and our maintenance to that facility in Starwood, because we have needs in both those areas. And looking at perhaps doing something similar to what you heard from Mr. Rockstrom, actually trying to attract some career technology folks in here. You know, I just got word today that, you know, Angelina College may be looking at closing outside of our campuses, and they have to do that in the upcoming season. And so, what a great opportunity for us to build an off and education facility for Angelina College, so that they can continue to do some of the things about all of the things that they do here, this community and all that. In addition, looking for some of the larger businesses in the area of TPC, with the program, with the, perhaps using fire department, looking at our local law enforcement, our agencies, to try to create some type of community technical schools over there, which would meet some of the needs that we have in the area. And that's the first. The second reason is that this board and I agreed four years ago when I came here, that we would begin to make decisions based on what's good for, not just our school district, but what's good for this entire community. And I can only speak for the last four years of what I've seen happen at this facility in the last four years, it's not been good for Crockett. And no perception lies economically anywhere you want to look at it, it hasn't been good for Crockett. And ultimately, I do not believe that this council can go wrong selling this facility in the school district. We are stable, we're not going to go under financially. We are going to, we want to offer you six hundred and fifty thousand dollar cash upfront, and we believe in the facility over here with our transportation, for our transportation systems, I have no idea if transportation in my case is so. But right now, that facility is on the books, it's, I believe, sixty-one thousand dollars is worth the present district payment for. I have no idea what the fair market price of that might be, but that's what it's on the, on the present district book for, for about sixty-one thousand dollars. So, you know, and all told, if you add the two together, the low side of another thousand dollars, what we're really looking at here, talking about is pumping to the district, or to, to the council front of the district. And I think my board will certainly approve any, I think the council chooses to, to answer the questions that you have.
If we're not in state, did this one put the three point one eight? Like, three point four? Three what? Three four?
Yes.
No, he's talking about the current bus department there.
I'm, I'm not talking about Mr. Jones, the bus transportation facility.
No, no, no.
Although that's all, that's all I'm talking about. And you know, the work of the facility over there on the books, you can't go back on the tax rule, so that, that amount of money is kind of a bit of a load, but I think in this particular transaction, if we're doing a sale, we're going to call it, because we're not going to generate tax money, we're going to try to generate some jobs out of it, some future for Crockett, but I don't want to feel guilty, I feel a bit of a tax bill on that, I feel. All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Bruce, could I address you on the?
Sure.
So, you understand how hard it is to go back and forth between board members and other entities without breaking any open meetings, act, or issues of that, of course. In my discussions with, to be completely open and upfront with you, my discussions initially that I had with the school district, that was, the assumption was, that's probably the initial thought, you weren't interested in the first offer. But there was a misunderstanding, and this is their offer, so I understand if you want to change the initial offer that you made, and?
Well, I'm, I'm prepared to, I'm prepared to offer, well, and let me, let me put my one caveat, because I'm a, I'm a nonprofit, a 501(c)(3), and I do have a board pending a week from tonight, so I have talked with my board, I've talked to my board chair, I've talked to my, you know, my staff, so what I'm saying tonight is still pending a board decision next week, right? Because I have to bring, as you know, I have to bring a form, a proposal, a form. But I would like, I would like to bring to my board a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, two fifty down, two fifty, assuming we could close and get an agreement, two fifty in six months, and two fifty, you know, a, a year from now. I can negotiate that, that's not, in fact, to be honest with you, I really think I would like to, we don't like to carry that, and we can pay things off immediately, and I would probably pay that off in the spring. I mean, I just would like to do that, that way it's clear. Certainly, we'd like to do it in this fiscal year, our fiscal year, it's August thirty-first, so I feel confident that we would pay that off this fiscal year. And I, I have the money in the bank, it's not, it's not an issue of could I do it or not do it, it's just a matter of cash flow, and how our, how our budgets, we obviously did not budget for this, for this required budget, it had been on our end, and looking at our, you know, but I'm prepared to stay with that.
Mr. Pemberton, could you, uh, could you please say?
Could you clarify, before any decisions are made, I know there's a separate process that has to take place, if we're going, from what I understand, depending on whether we sell it to another public entity, right, the school district versus a private, or a nonprofit?
If you sell it to the school district, or the other side, if you decide so, it's really a communal kind. If you want to sell to a private entity, we've got a process. So, if you decide to go to private entity, we need to, like, motion, ensure that we comply with all the requirements, who actually will come.
So, is there a?
You know, the stipulation on the student issue would be that they have to do the property for a public purpose, and if they don't use the private, that's really the problem.
That would, that would go either way we sell it, correct? Because the deprecation from the general land office moves with the proper, so.
We could talk back, I don't think we could, but, Jen, that, or do the executive decision.
That's half of the decision. Had to be made, I think.
What do you have to say?
These discussions can be made for, we table?
Mr. Pemberton, that we, we can discuss a time, and?
We both think you've got to go back.
They both have to talk to their board?
Yeah, both got to go back to the board, since, um, the decision.
The only, I guess, the main decision would be decide on what their operators again vote to go, to give them the ability to, their attorneys, talk with our attorney, and develop the process. You know, our attorney needs to, to know whether we're going to go forward or not, or we could table it, and not decide to go forward, but there's still decisions that we're not ready to make.
Well, the charter school is on cap, and it's open, it's open to fifty thousand. The Crockett ISD becomes up to like seven hundred and eleven thousand.
Do you want to, would it be the bus department today? I would say it's probably, just for the, for the, for the, for the. From what I saw, it went a little over, is it, am I correct in saying it's a little over two acres?
No, I haven't looked at the actual acre.
I'll say it's right, a little over two acres on the phrase district, but, but between two property deeds.
It's, it's in two different, yeah, two different additions.
You know, as far as that goes, I think that property would be a, a big asset for the city of Crockett, be able to put our maintenance and mechanics shop there to open up. The current one we're operating now, that has one door, and we have to push the back vehicles out of to get when other properties come, so it's hard to ever really break down and work on any one vehicle. And I really think by moving that, that would, would help our operations on the mechanic side. We've been operating out of that building for years, so if we continue operating, that would also open up the water district, the water department having their supplies, their tie, their equipment to Crockett, through and out of there. So, I know I mentioned a few, you know, that I've had a chance to talk, not only the development that we really have today, but this maintenance, barns, and school. That would be a significant difference.
Well, from my perspective, and as I listened to both presentations, and I sit here and ralphored this, one time I worked in the district, and I recognize the need of our student body as far as vocational programs are concerned. Those will not be leaving our high school on a four-year policy. They need to be prepared for the workforce. And I, I think that, as I sit here in this seat, as given to me by the people of my district, my constituents, as I listen to both presentations, I have to look at the economic impact of this sale, which entity would make the greatest economic impact for the citizens of our city. And with that said, if there is a possibility, and I have a lot of respect and regard for this in mind, and what he needs for this property, and also the future implications of what the district can do with it, and I understand that, but also on the other hand, I understand the great need of our citizens to go to work, and jobs to be generated, to provide and care for families. On one end, if we enter into a deal with a local district, they can use that property as they see fit, the most beneficial, as our attorney is stating. And they perhaps, as time go by, that property, with the guy that's our superintendent, and hopefully the next superintendent who comes after Mr. Myers is gone, would have somewhat of a certain vision, hopefully, to develop that property into what the vision that he has inspired and laid out before us. And then with Bray Nation, there are jobs to be, and there are people who are online involved in right now, would love to have a job, who they can care for their families. And so, it's a paradox. I have no interest in either one, but as I sit here and looking out and understanding my responsibility, and looking out for the citizens, those in our precinct, as well as the city and its entire team, I have, I'm, I'm looking more at jobs, because from my perspective, whatever happens under the leadership of our superintendent, would be great if a contract was had with the district. But my concern is, after he's gone, what will the next superintendent do in regards to the property? Would he be inspired, led, to develop, or to continue what Mr. Myers has already laid out, when he's not out running in the future? But I can only say that for now, what I've seen, and the needs that we face in accounting the economically impacted by, and our economy we need for, and I understand what Mr. Myers has stated there, the issue that we've had with this property, the space due to the past, with two other entities that had occupied that property. Is it three, counsel? Okay, thank you for the correction, however. This particular transaction, unlike the others, would be a sale. I had, I had thought about it, I would be interested in at least, but I'm going to sell, and both entities tonight, interested in buying the property, so that as a council, we don't have to go and visit it again down the road, as to what we're going to do with it, or do about it, so. So, uh, it is a paradox, and I, I'm kind of between the two. On one hand, I, I want to see that dream come to fruition, uh, and that property be developed into, uh, a space that can utilize for the district needs, as well as a vocational program that's outstanding, and that's well-known and renowned, uh, in our state, perhaps. And also, as I conclude, I would like to see jobs created, uh, in this economic downturn. There's a lot of people prospering with property, it is not quite there yet. If by chance this council can do anything to help the economy of our city with initial sale, as well as what's done with it after the sale, I think it is incumbent on us as a council to make those decisions, those choices.
If you may take the motion, um, that is on the table. Uh, you know, three.
Do you want to make a motion? Do you want to make a motion to settle to crack ISD?
I second that motion. The motion is a made that we sell it to private ISD, and most of whom made it conservative, they're right in favor, show me your hands. Motion's passed that we sold to private ISD.
Mr. Myers?
Mayor?
Yes?
I want to make a comment, actually, on that. I want Mr. Box to, with folks that are sitting here as well as the city and the community to know that we have intended for this, this, this school district project. I know the city has expressed its interest in the possibility of this station, or, or maybe on behalf of the local city, and fractional costs that you advise on it somewhere, to get a piece of that property over there, that will be a problem for us to go through. In addition, if there are some avenues, and Mr. Box was talking about in terms of things that they have to offer, some children, even in our district, or perhaps some resources that they have, and the benefit of this community, some of the teachers that they have, certainly have, we're always in the market for math, and science, and social studies teaching, and foreign language teaching. And so if you've got some of them, we'd be more than glad to give those both jobs, to make sure that everybody knows, you know, not quickly, but necessarily, in a situation like that. We want to work with this council as well, if he knows and develops, that we, that you can help us with, to give some career, technology, some jobs, because I guarantee that's my concern too, is to give some stability in that facility. And so I know that's what our board is talking about, simply to go, we want to produce something that we can offer, we want some jobs. I know what you're concerned about, and appreciate you, Mark, but I want everybody to know this is not, now, it's true, this is going to take all this to run off, now, we want to work with the community here, we just want to stay in the industry, because we're just going to have to go from there, so that we can regulate, and we don't get a, you know, negative perception of something that we're doing. So I want to work in here, and I know that I'm old, but you're better to work with me on certain projects, I thank you for your, uh, I think, I think, I think, I think, I think, and thank you for doing that, I want to see what else.
And thank you, council, for your, for the opportunity, for your consideration, I appreciate it. We, we wish Crockett all the best, thank you very much. Terry, congratulations. All right.
Home number five, the approval of minutes for the regular session schedule on October the 2nd, 2017, and the special session October 11th, 2017.
I make motion for approval. Two.
Okay, the motion has been made by Councilman Marsh, and Secretary of Council Jackson, everyone in favor? Home to number six, the fire department monthly activity and status report for October of 2017.
To the mayor and council members, consider this. For the month of October, we had a total of forty-eight calls, broke down a very tall inside the city, eighteen to the town, we had a much bigger fire inside the city. We had two hundred and eighty-five men on it, more officers. We've got a total manpower of seventeen at the time, that we have a business party all that's ready to call, and then we, we're going to work and drive and get it all, just that being important.
Any questions? Thank you. Okay, home number seven, the police department maniac over terminal incident report for October 2017.
Thank you, mayor, city council member, city minister. The October 2017 report had a total manpower of fifteen, they worked 2,659 hours, managed 360 calls during that period, eleven traffic accidents, made 71 arrests, issued 140 traffic citations, took in a total of ninety-six reports, and had twenty long calls. But right now, though, the report, while there are irritating questions about the report, yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Sir.
Home to number eight, the Crockett Economic and Industrial Development Corporation report by Mr. James Gentry.
To the mayor and the council?
Hello?
We don't have a large report, but a few things I want to highlight to you tonight. Uh, at the end of our fiscal year, our sales tax allocation, fiscal year 2016, 2017 was on par. We projected a budget of 530,000, uh, actually, we had receipts of over 529,000, tax receipts for economic development. During the past month, we've had five meetings with small business interests in our area, uh, with small business developing business plans and developing passports with them to develop businesses here in our area. Uh, attended the annual Texas Economic Development, uh, conference in Houston two weeks ago, and one of the several things that go with coming to those are looking out for alternatives for financing and incentives for developing businesses, small and large in our area, one area that, uh, targeting education on its new market tax program, uses to several businesses here in the area, and hopefully, some of those will be able to be taken advantage of. Uh, we will be attending the Texas Party Partnership in Lufkin, uh, there will be one day Focus on Texas Fin Commission workshop, which would be tomorrow, I'll be attending that, and the following day, I've been invited to some, a little bit important, some, uh, two of your councilmen, and there's one other slide open, I know, Mary, you're not able to make it, but the government will be speaking at the Economic Development Conference that we'll have on Wednesday there in Lufkin. Um, then we have, uh, this is probably been posted in the papers, we've instituted litigation of useless or inad placed connection with former school that we entered into them when they opened up the facility a year and a half ago, and, uh, just visiting with attorneys and planning to submit that this recovery for disposition of that litigation. Uh, we've also met with several other interests of businesses here in the area, uh, we've been, uh, involved with assisting them with things such as air permits and other things that we can, working with legislators, looking with that, as well as looking at other alternative financing options, such as what I mentioned earlier, the new market tax credit programs. Uh, Ms. Pierre was here, we visited with one agent that's interested in some of the business interests with the USDA as well. Uh, from that standpoint, we continue to aggressively have an open door policy to attract businesses to our area, but also to reach out to our existing businesses to maintain them or to assist them in training our developing aspects that we can help them in terms of financing, even through our technical skills, or through the workforce solutions as well, and just part of their board, for your case, uh, any questions?
I think I want to question.
Attorney, uh, what is the, the status written in, in, uh, in the...
The dealership, uh, the last call I had with them was their last Friday, uh, they have, as I reported, I think, last time, received a 85% lock-in from the price of dealership. They're negotiating with, uh, banks here in the area, and one of the banks, uh, just got back with them here this past week, a little disappointed that they haven't received response, uh, in front, in terms of further information from them. But, uh, they are still trying to put a footprint here in our area with a bank here in the area, but they have some alternative areas that they're also looking at, but the first purpose is to work with a bank here in our county to, uh, complete that project for the end of the year.
Thank you. That would be...
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gentry.
Sure.
Home to number nine, consider and approve a resolution of the city of Crockett to support the mission and vision of the transportation excellent for the 21st century U.S. 287 corridor task force. If y'all read this, this goes from Fort Arthur all the way up in. And it's going to, it'll bring traffic through Crockett, so I think that's the thing. Just a...
This is a resolution, um, showing our support to the U.S. 287 corridor task force to go and lobby with the Texas, uh, begin a study for U.S. 287 to, um, increase its capacity and to upgrade it to interstate status from U.S. 287 to an interstate, uh, such as one, not the primary, but was I, I-69. Um, so...
I think that's a good thing, uh, again, in the future, it has the potential to make the financial...
Hasn't there already been studies? I don't remember this one.
I think, or a good study, Mr. Gentry's the one that first brought it to my attention.
There, there, that is part of the ongoing study. Some of the, uh, initial studies were through the Texas 21 lobbying group, this is a step in terms of bringing that to an higher level of, of text act review. Uh, they have been going through a sunset review of, uh, the DOT the last ten years, and funding has been kind of short. I sent them a meeting two months ago, I believe it was, in Austin, and talked about opening up funds to be able to investigate this further. And, and, and basically, it will impact economic development for sure in this area. Uh, that was one of the reasons we've been a part to the Texas 21 partnership as well.
It wouldn't be, instead of leaving Beaumont or Arthur, if it went out I-10 and around, it would come straight up here, you know, going up. So that would, like, cut to the middle and cut a lot of time off of them.
Exactly.
And travel.
And one, one, and one of the things I may have shared with some of you about it with is, is the impetus of the Panama Canal. Panama Canal, the last ten years, has gone through major expansion and growth for large tanker ships that, uh, and in the past, like, the past, like, slater, slater, they appropriated funds for, uh, harbors, such as the channel in Houston, Beaumont, to deepen those, to address these large ships coming in. When those ships come in, they're going to need mature transportation to get those offloaded and get out of that area to the Midwest, uh, through that, so that's, that's part of a multi-phase effort here.
And we did pay to be a part.